Okay, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the March 28th, 2022 Planning Commission Workshop. We will start with the Pledge of Legions. Commissioner Johnson, will you lead us, please?
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, we are a nation under God, indivisible, eternal, and everlasting.
Thank you very much. And Michelle, can we please have roll call?
Alex Veltow is absent. J.D. Draculich?
Here.
Peter Gower?
Here.
Mark Johnson?
Here.
Arthur Munoz is absent. Sylvia Villanueva?
Here.
And Kathleen Taylor?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to give public comment prior to the presentation?
Could I make a statement first before we start, please? It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued to the presiding, by the presiding officer. If there is disruptive behavior, you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, we did receive public comment for future agenda items. Those items were forwarded to the Planning Commission and have been entered as part of the record. No voicemails were received, and I did not receive public comment cards, or I'm sorry, request to speak forms specifically for this item. We did have some request to speak forms for the actual item 4.1. And I have Councilmember Dewar on Zoom, and she has her hand raised. I don't know if she wants to make comment on general public comment or specifically for item 4.1.
Does she want to do general? You want to find out?
Councilwoman Dewar, did you want to make comment on the general public comment or specifically for item 4.1?
Well, it's on the upcoming item, which is the main focus of the meeting. Unfortunately, I have another board meeting I serve on, and their annual meeting is tonight, so I thought the sooner the better, but whatever the preference of the chair is.
It's completely up to you. Three minutes before or three minutes after?
Okay, well, I'll just go ahead right now. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. My name's Naomi Dewar, and I'm Reno City Councilwoman, and I am the liaison to the Urban Forestry Commission. Having an updated tree ordinance has been a dream or a focus of mine, as well as the Urban Forestry Commission, for going on seven years. We learned long ago that we only had about 5% tree cover in the city of Reno. That data comes from the Nevada Division of Forestry. So for the last couple of years, and especially the last about nine months, the Urban Forestry Commission has been working diligently on updating the code. The process has been amazing. They have had meetings just about every other week, and they put in incredibly, incredible amount of hard work on this. I don't plan to speak on any details because I think that would actually be out of order, but I wanted to just give a general endorsement to the process that they went through. The goal was to set up development for success. And one thing you'll find as you delve into this is that there is no, there are no new trees required to be planted generally. It's not like we'll plant twice as many trees. No, instead, the focus is on making sure that the trees that are planted actually live and grow up to be bigger trees with a bigger canopy. So soil and irrigation and making sure people do what they say has really been the focus. To that end, the city has already, we're going to start budget hearings tomorrow, and the city has said that they plan to increase the staffing to allow inspections that would ensure that the tree ordinance is actually followed. The main goal is making sure that we plant the right tree in the right place, and again, no new trees. You all know that we have climate issues. Trees are the simplest and cheapest thing we can do as a community, whether at the city, private businesses, other agencies, to increase our canopy and help both clean our air and moderate our heat increases that we're seeing. So I also wanted to mention, I'm not sure what your process is today for talking about this ordinance. I know it's a little bit lengthy, but if you keep in mind that there are really no new trees recommended, and it's just making sure that what we do has integrity and actually succeeds and helps expand our tree canopy, that is our goal today. So I'll keep it short and I'll end there with one more addition. And that is that there may be some confusion about drafts. I know the Urban Forestry Commission worked on a draft. That draft was sent out for public comment. I don't think that draft is actually in your packet, but that's a good question to ask. Secondly, we've had some people that have requested exemptions. I think we should listen to what their reasoning for that is and take it into account, but I think everyone wants to make sure that if a tree is being planted, it is being planted well, and it will succeed. That is really the goal here. So thank you so much for listening to me. I'll be listening, and we'll take back the information you provide back to Urban Forestry. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else in the audience want to provide public comment now? Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Commission. Kelly Mullen, Principal Planner, with the city of Reno.
Kelly, can you bring your mic closer to you, please? Thank you.
How about that? And if we could just bring up the PowerPoint presentation. I'll just see if we can go back to that first slide.
Kelly, you can control it from the podium.
All right. Give you a quick preview there of what's to come. So thank you for having us this evening to talk about the city's tree protection ordinance. It's been a lengthy project that, in some form or fashion, has been going on for several years, really kind of moving forward with additional, additional work in the last several months. I do want to just do a quick shout out to the core project team. Matt Basil, our urban forester, Jamie Schroeder, Parks and Rec Director, and John Shipman, our Assistant City Attorney. We will be hearing from Mr. Shipman during the presentation today also. Certainly, there have been a lot of other stakeholders. Urban Forestry Commission has been incredible with our involvement as part of this as well, but I just wanted to start off by saying that. And this evening, what we're going to be doing is talking about the project overall, kind of set, set the stage, provide some context in terms of the goals of the project, the process that we have gone through to get us to this point so far, and talk about some of the legal considerations that are, you know, what you will see or part of what have led to the existing draft. We're going to talk about some of the key highlights from the ordinance as well, and then open it up for discussion and questions with the Planning Commission. We are not requesting any specific action from the Planning Commission tonight beyond just looking to provide context and allow you a focused time to ask questions about this. We will be bringing it back to you April 20th for formal action review and recommendation to City Council. All right. So first, we're going to, we're going to start off with some of the goals of the project itself. And I'm sure that most of you are aware that we have a number of policies that City Council has adopted in various plans that speak to the importance of the tree canopy to our community. I think all of us are aware that trees, of course, provide many community benefits, whether they're environmental, social, aesthetic, economic, many different benefits that you will see reflected in those policies that have been adopted in the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, the City Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and also our Urban Forestry Management Plan. So in part of trying to make those policies real, to try to put them into code and be able to implement them, actually draft some standards around them, which is a key part of this ordinance, you know, what we wanted to provide some context on first is just what are the existing standards that we have in our zoning code right now? What are the existing standards in Reno municipal code? I think most folks are probably aware that anytime that there is new development, landscaping is generally going to be required to be installed. What that looks like will be based on the zoning district, what the specific use is that's proposed, and how that development looks. Generally speaking, you will see standards for the types of vegetation to be planted, what the soil requirements are, irrigation requirements, that sort of thing. For certain types of permits, we also have a requirement that was adopted with the new zoning code that requires an inventory of existing trees on site. In our current adopted code, we also have mitigation requirements for trees that are in the front yard and right-of-way trees. And then, of course, if landscaping is required to be installed, it needs to be maintained. Failure to do so could result in some sort of a penalty, whether it be a fine or license revocation. And then, of course, public trees, those are generally more heavily protected. Those are considered part of the city's green infrastructure. And in our existing processes, if someone wishes to remove a public tree or do certain types of maintenance, there's generally some sort of a permit that's required, and they would need to be replaced or some sort of an in-loo fee paid to remove them. So what are the issues that we're trying to address with this code project? What are the problems that we have identified through conversations with stakeholders that we want to make sure that we get at with the updated code amendment? First one, a big one that we have seen in various places throughout the community is, is issues where landscaping that was required to be installed is actually being removed or being damaged. For example, trees being topped outside of the permit process. That's something that we want to remedy as part of this. Another issue that is frequently occurring that we want to make sure that we get at is that landscaping is often not installed according to the approved plans or to generally accepted standards. And of course, that's something that could reduce the likelihood of those trees being able to survive and thrive in the long term. One of the other items, as I mentioned, are tree protection standards or mitigation requirements are only applicable to trees that are in the front yard and to right-of-way trees, and only during the construction process. One of the other things that we have heard from the community, from people going through permitting process, is that there's uncertainty in our code in terms of what threshold tree protection standards actually apply, how we appraise public trees, who has responsibility for maintaining the public trees, and what penalties are when it comes to violations associated with landscaping code. And then, of course, just like many other jurisdictions across the United States, we have limited resources to actually being able to implement and enforce codes. So those are all things that we're trying to get at as part of this code amendment. So let's talk about the process of what we have done so far to get us to this evening. This is the most recent timeline for the last nine months or so. Like I said, in some form or another, we've been talking about the importance of trees to our community for several years. We have seen many plans that have been adopted and policies adopted related to the importance of trees, but really, when it comes to the code amendment piece, the biggest push for this has been in the last year. So back in June of last year, we visited with Urban Forestry Commission to talk through some of the concepts around this ordinance, talk through some of the options that we could look at pursuing. And then, back in July, council initiated, formally initiated, the code amendment in midsummer in August. Staff drafted an initial code ordinance and then took that to the Urban Forestry Commission over a series of workshops that occurred in the fall. And that draft that came out of the Urban Forestry Commission was then put out to the public for their input. So we had a pretty extensive outreach process in January of this year where we held a series of workshops for the public, went to all the neighborhood advisory boards, held open houses, took all of that information in, considered it, and then before that next draft went to the Urban Forestry Commission, that language had been updated. So at first, the updated draft, the one that you see as Attachment A in your packet, that went to Urban Forestry, excuse me, Urban Forestry Commission a couple of weeks ago. It will go back to them again on April 4th. On the 16th of March, they did recommend that Chapter 8.32, that portion of it, that they recommended that council approve that, and then they will be voting on the Title 18, Proposed Changes, again, April 4th. So this evening, we have a workshop scheduled with you, and again, we won't be asking for your formal recommendation until April 20th. Following that, we'll be bringing it to council. So this screen is, this is a slide that we have been including with all of the, the public meetings because we want to drive home the diverse array of stakeholders that are part of this process. We recognize that there are a lot of different folks with a lot of different perspectives, a lot of different priorities that have something to say about trees in our community. And we have made a concerted effort to reach out to as many stakeholders to participate in this process as possible. So stakeholders, I think, they, they really run the gamut here, whether it's local landscaping professionals, to property developers, business owners, private property owners, general residents, certainly all of the different departments at the city that would be impacted by any change, other government agencies like our Health District, Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, et cetera, other interested parties, environmental groups, and then, of course, each of the hearing bodies. So Urban Forestry Commission, this body and council. So in trying to reach out to all of those different stakeholders, we worked with the communications, the city's communications team to devise a communication strategy that would reach as many folks as possible. That included a series of news releases, interviews on television and radio. We did a social media outreach. And then we also did direct outreach to those in the landscaping community that we had contact information for. Also, any landscape-related business that had a business license, so that was over 280 businesses, reached out to the development community, to all of the folks that had subscribed to updates for this project, a variety of different local agencies in the area, and then did a hard copymailer to over 350 HOAs as well. So really tried to get the word out. This is just a list of those input opportunities that we had back in January. To summarize, we went to five neighborhood advisory boards, held three workshops, held two open houses. We had numerous other meetings with other agencies and groups. And then, of course, overall, we have a total of nine meetings with the Urban Forestry Commission, one of those upcoming April 4th. So how many folks did we have participate? What did that involvement actually look like? Great participation at the workshops and the open houses, over 60 attendees at those. We had a number of comments and questions that were addressed at the neighborhood advisory boards. We had over 80 comments and letters that were submitted in writing. They were part of your packet for this evening. Those are in Attachment B. And then, you know, because of that wide variety and diversity of the stakeholders, we had a lot of different opinions and suggestions that were received. It was not something where I would say any kind of consensus was reached. We heard from a lot of different folks with a lot of different opinions. So Attachment B is where you will see the widest range of those, all of that, where you can see all of those details. But I will say that many of the suggestions that we received through those various methods were incorporated into the revised draft that you see as Attachment A. So after all of that public outreach, talking to the community, talking to stakeholders about the initial draft that came out in December, we wanted to take all of that into consideration and look back at the goals of the project, what we had identified as those objectives, things that we wanted to make sure to address as part of the next ordinance amendment. And then, of course, like with any code amendment that we do, we want to make sure that we're also looking at the policies that the city has adopted, whether that's from the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, the City Strategic Plan, to make sure that we have an understanding of how those policies that are adopted could be impacted by any code change we make. And then, of course, again, just like any other amendment, we always want to make sure that we have a good understanding of what it would actually take to administer and enforce any code changes that are put into place. And then, a big piece of some of the changes that you will, that are in Attachment A from the prior draft were a result of an in-depth legal analysis. We really want to make sure that any amendment that we recommend to City Council is something that is legally defensible, and that is something that we have identified potential liabilities, that we've done an analysis for that, and that it is a defendable product. There were some changes specific to mitigation that came out of the, the updated draft. And what I would like to do at this point is hand it over to Assistant City Attorney John Shipman. He's going to talk a little bit. He's going to talk a little bit about the idea of takings and how that kind of ties into the tree ordinance. I want to provide this context to the planning commission because these considerations did have an impact on the draft that staff is recommending at this point. John?
Thank you, Kelly. Madam Chair and Commissioners, John Shipman for the record here tonight. Yeah, just to give a quick little background, a draft came out in December, and that went over to legal to take a look at that. And like with all ordinances, we check it against points and authorities and the status of current law. One of the things that was very interesting that came out of that analysis is the fact that this is a very rapidly developing area. There's been like case law that's developing in real time as we speak. I mean, in the last three years, we've had some very significant cases by the U.S. Supreme Court and by some other courts that really impact the way that we're looking at this ordinance and potentially what potential liabilities are out there. And so, to a certain degree, there's a timing issue that's going on here. Some of this law is unsettled, and you know, there's, part of maybe what I'm putting out there is, is that there, you know, some of this, we're being a little bit cautious and conservative in our approach because we don't want to become the test case for a lot of this stuff. But, so anyway, if we could have the next slide, if... So the big concern that, you know, when we're looking at the draft that came out in December was, involved the takings clause, and as I'm sure everyone is aware here at this commission, the takings clause of the Fifth Amendment provides that private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation. It's applied to the states through the Fourteenth Amendment. The Nevada Constitution has an analog to it. It's Article 1, Section 8, Subsection 3, private property shall not be taken for a public use without just compensation. The purpose of the takings clause, just for everybody to recollect, is to protect against the government singling out and forcing some people to bear public burdens which in fairness and justice should be borne by the public as a whole. It's kind of a discrimination clause, if you will. So a slide? And what it really says, and the key to remember, is that it doesn't limit the government's ability to regulate and interfere with property rights per se, but it does say just compensation needs to be paid where government interference hits a certain threshold. And once it hits a certain threshold, and it's a pretty involved legal analysis at this point, I'm not going to get into depth on it tonight, but needless to say, there's a couple, there's three general lanes that a regulation can fall into, and depending upon which lane you fall into, there's a different standard to determine whether or not the regulation amounts to a taking. Bottom line, if it hits a certain threshold, then the government has to pay just compensation. It doesn't say that the government can't do the act, but rather, it creates a financial liability. So when we looked at the December ordinance, you know, the concern that we had is if we were talking about a generally applicable tree removal ordinance, so if you had a tree on your property and you had to get a permit to have it removed, that creates some challenges. So if there's a, if there are removal ordinance that requires property owners to replace trees to mitigate for the loss of the benefit of the canopy to the community, there's definitely an argument to say that that amounts to, constitutes a taking of private property for public use and triggers the payment of just compensation. From like a planning commission perspective, within the context of discretionary approvals that come before you kind of on a regular basis, there's a different standard of review, and you're probably familiar with it, Nolan and Dolan, you know, there has to be a nexus between what the requirement is, it has to be roughly proportional, et cetera, et cetera. What I'm talking about here is a generally applicable tree removal ordinance, like you can't remove a tree unless you can get a permit. That's where you start running into problems. But that's where there's, there was some, maybe I'd characterize it as some misunderstanding about where, what the ordinances were doing and where we had to sort of maybe take a different approach, go from a more of a carrot, a stick approach to a carrot approach. And that's what you're going to see tonight. And I can answer more questions, if people have specific questions, I'm sure you do, I can answer those. But I just wanted to put it out there that a lot of what you're going to see tonight is the product of the fact that this case law is developing really right now, right as we sit here today. There's, I can think of two cases right now that are, one involves a tree ordinance that is very similar to what we were looking back at back in December. So we prefer maybe some other jurisdictions make the law rather than have the city of Reno be the one that becomes the name on the case caption. So anyway, I just wanted to put that out there, and if people have specific questions, I'm here to answer any questions, so.
John, thank you for that overview. So just wanted to get that out there before we get into the nuts and bolts of the proposed ordinance. So at this point, we're going to talk a little bit about the highlights of what you'll actually see in Attachment A. I want to draw attention to the fact that there are two different areas of Reno municipal code that are being impacted. Chapter 8.32 is not something that you would normally see as this body, but because the changes there are definitely tied to the changes in the zoning code, we want to make sure to bring those to you as an entire package, same thing that we did with the Urban Forestry Commission, so that you're aware of all of the changes that are proposed as part of this project. So Chapter 8.32 is what you will, where you will see the standards and requirements for how public trees are dealt with, and then also private trees that are deemed to be a nuisance. Title 18, of course, you're very familiar with, the zoning code. That's where you'll see those standards for new development, requirements for installing new landscaping, protecting trees, and maintaining trees. So generally speaking, there are four types of changes you will see in Attachment A. That draft ordinance, you'll see a series of new incentives intended to really encourage preservation of existing trees on a property. You'll also see enhanced planning standards, and that is trying to get at the issue where we see trees that are not necessarily being installed according to approved plans or to generally accepted standards. We want to make sure that those trees that are being planted in our community that are associated with a development project, that they are being planted right, that they're being planted in the appropriate type of soil, the appropriate quantity of soil, and in the right places. And you'll also see code changes that are focused on really increasing our ability to administer and enforce the standards in the code, and then throughout both of those code change areas, numerous clarifications. So we'll talk about on this slide and the next slide, some of the primary changes to Chapter 8.32. Again, that is where you will see standards related to public trees. Whole new section, enhanced language on the purpose of that chapter, really beefing up some of the definitions that are found in Chapter 8.32, and an exciting new option that is in there also. I'm not sure if anyone is aware that right now, we have the ability to designate public trees as landmark trees, if they're a particularly interesting specimen, that we do have that option to designate public landmark trees, excuse me, public trees as a landmark tree. What you will see in Chapter 8.3 is a new option to actually designate private trees as landmark trees. Certainly, that would be at the application of the property owner, but we're looking at ways to incentivize that as well. You will see a number of changes trying to clarify the responsibilities for abutting property owners when it comes to maintenance of public trees, and distinguishing between what's the responsibility of an abutting property owner versus an HOA versus the urban forestry program. You will also see new code language that codifies the process for when there is an abutting property owner that wishes to remove a tree that's not scheduled for removal, how that could potentially happen. And then also, trying to get at some of those concerns that we had heard from the public previously about uncertainty about how public trees are appraised, adding in a new section to, specific to that, clarifying how public trees are appraised, and then also as part of that, offering a new simplified method for appraisal as well. You'll see a number of clarifications related to how permits are issued, how they're applied for, when someone wants to work on or impact a public tree, what those processes are, and then also a new section that would require financial assurances be provided if there is a public tree that would potentially be impacted by construction activities and for whatever reason it could not be adequately protected during the construction process, where financial assurances would have to be provided to the city. So those are the changes to Chapter 8.32. Now we're going to talk about the changes to the zoning code. So these are kind of peppered throughout the, a few different sections in Title 18. You will see them, a good chunk of changes in our section, that existing section on tree protection, but then also our landscaping article that deals with requirements for new landscaping going in. So you will see changes related to how parking lot trees are installed, associated soil volume and quality requirements, updating the requirements for new street trees that are going in, in terms of the canopy class size of those trees, requiring across the board that newly planted trees meet soil quality and volume standards. And again, that's trying to get at making sure that trees that are installed are done so in a way that will allow them to survive in the long term. There's a new procedure that is addressed in the code language as well. If someone is looking to reduce required landscaping on their property, again, landscaping that was required to be installed as part of a development project, if after that, you know, development goes through the process, it's, the business is up and running, and they wish to reduce or relocate some of that required landscaping, we now offer a new procedure that would allow them to come in, submit for a landscape permit to make sure that those requirements are still being met. And then also, a new modification of standards option that would be specific to extraordinary circumstances where flexibility may be warranted. So the biggest change from that December draft, as Mr. Shipman indicated, we wanted to make sure that, based on the current legal climate, that we are shifting away from those mitigation requirements and moving more towards incentives. And I want to be clear that what we're talking about here is when you've got, let's say, a vacant piece of property that has trees on the site already, those are trees that are, they're existing, but they were not required to be planted, that if those trees are proposed to be removed as part of the development, that's where these incentives would kick in. So, and I just want to remind folks too, that right now, our current code has mitigation requirements for trees that are in the front yard, front set-back area only. These incentives would be applicable across an entire, the entire property. But again, you know, not incentives for preserving, say, required trees, but incentives for preserving some of those existing trees on a site. So we have several new credits and bonuses that would be potential options for someone to achieve if they are seeking to, or if they do preserve some of those existing trees onsite. The first one is a landscaping credit. So it would allow for, depending on the size of the tree, credits for preserving those existing trees onsite to count towards new trees that would have otherwise been required to be planted. And that would be, the credit that would be provided would be based on the size of the tree. Similarly, another incentive would be a density bonus. And again, that would be based on the size of the tree. What you will see in that current draft is that if for every three trees that are greater than six inches in diameter, that that would count towards a potential one-unit bonus. Six trees would be required to be preserved if they're in that two-to-six inch range for that same one-unit bonus. That could be a density bonus of up to 10% above what the zoning district allows. This particular incentive is something that we think gets at a couple of different issues facing the city right now. We're all aware, there's, you know, incredible issues in our community with housing affordability, with supply issues, and I think the benefit here is that we could potentially allow for some additional units to be created under certain circumstances as well as preserving trees. Both of those things, I think, are important to the council based on those adopted policies and kind of gets at both of those pieces. But we fully recognize that not every development is going to take advantage of or find appealing or even be eligible for, you know, the various incentives that are listed here. So that's why we have kind of a menu option, a set of menu options to choose from. So another incentive is allowing for a parking credit of up to 25%, where preservation of certain-sized trees would allow for fewer parking spaces to be installed and constructed as part of the development. Again, just like with the other incentives, that would be based on the size of the trees being preserved. And then the last one that you see on here are credits for wall articulation requirements. So what those credits would look like would vary based on the zoning district. I'm not sure how familiar all the planning commission members are with our wall articulation requirements, but they vary whether or not it's in a residential district, a mixed-use district, or a non-residential district. And the way that those credits would apply would again be based on the size of the tree being preserved. That's something that if we want to get into the details further during questioning, I can bring up additional information for you as well. But the intent here is, is really to shift, shift from mitigation requirements, shift from penalizing the removal so much as really incentivizing preservation of existing trees onsite. Now, that's just talking about some of those incentives, but there are a number of other things that I think that we need to take into consideration that you'll see in Attachment A, in that draft ordinance, that also help to get at protecting our existing tree canopy first. So when we're talking about those trees that are preserved for incentives, if that incentive is taken advantage of, that tree that's being preserved, it becomes a required tree, just like a, you know, new tree that's required to be installed. From that point on, it's considered a required tree. Needs to be protected from construction activities, needs to be maintained in the future, and during construction, monitoring is required as well. And that's actually a new, there's a new section in the code for all trees that are required to be protected during construction, intermittent monitoring during the construction process would be required to make sure that those protection strategies are actually being implemented onsite. If those trees that are used for incentives are not protected, or they are damaged during the construction process, we want to make sure that that is something that can be quickly addressed. One of the things you will see in the code language is the option for the administrator to issue a stop-work order if those trees that were, you know, given an incentive for preserving them, if they are damaged. The reason for that is we want to make sure that, let's say, if someone's getting an additional unit or getting, you know, fewer parking spaces, or they designed their building based on preservation of those trees, we want to make sure that those trees are preserved, that it's not something that, you know, that requirement is not taken lightly. So you'll see code language that speaks to trying to, try to better ensure that those do stay protected. In our existing code right now, and something that will continue, trees that are required to be installed, they need to be maintained. If they die, if they're damaged, they need to be replaced. There's new language that kind of beefs up our ability to issue violations on a per-tree basis. Right now, when there is a code enforcement complaint, when there is a violation that's confirmed, those violations are applied on a per-site, per-property basis. So that's some new language that you'll see in there, that those penalties could potentially be applied per-tree. And then, like we mentioned earlier, the prior draft, the December draft, had some new mitigation requirements that were being proposed. And again, those being, are being pulled back as a result of some of those legal conversations where we have that shift to incentives. But I do want to point out that protections for street trees, for right-of-way trees, that those remain the same, that is in... That is in chapter 8.32, where you see those requirements, where if someone is proposing to remove a public tree, that the value of that tree needs to be paid to the city. And then the the last item on there is that there is still, you know, what we've been talking about in terms of those mitigation requirements and incentives, those mitigation requirements were for existing trees on site, not required. And that's something that we were talking about through like a building permit process, what we would call an administrative process. We still have flexibility through the discretionary permit process. So let's say when you have a tentative subdivision map, conditional use permit, something like that, where there is discretion at looking at the overall impact of the project itself, that you would still have the ability as part of those review of those projects to look at the entire impact, including those impacts to potential trees that would be removed. So there are a number of other changes I want to touch on too. This is outside of the code update itself. You'll see some of those details in the staff report. One of the key items is that we recognize that, you know, one of the areas where we could improve right now is ensuring that landscaping that is being installed is being inspected. It is currently not inspected by a city inspector. That is something that we would like to see changed as part of this, that would help to ensure that those trees are being planted, landscaping is being planted according to their approved plans. So as part of this package, when we bring it forth to council, we will be asking for resources to allow the to allow for an additional staff position to be used specifically for inspections and other landscaping related permit review, that kind of a thing. But recognizing that, you know, we currently do not have capacity for that, so that is something that would require additional resources, but we feel is worthwhile. So some of the other things that you will see in the outside of the code change, moving some of the items that are actually in code right now, some of the details into the city's standard details for construction. The reasoning for that is that it will help not just with those who are actually submitting plans to the city, to be able to be more consistent, submit, I think, more easily, but also for our our staff in reviewing. Also looking at trying to streamline the tracking and permitting process processes specific to tree permits. Currently, some of those are done outside of our permitting system, so bringing that into Acela, our permitting system system. And then another important component of that, I think this is this would be done primarily after a new code is adopted, but really increasing education for the community in terms of identifying, you know, how to properly select a tree for the specific site, where it's going to be going, how to plan it appropriately, how to care for it, who has what responsibilities when it comes to maintaining public trees, that type of thing. We think there are a lot of opportunities there that we would like to investigate. In terms of hearing schedule, again, a week before last, Urban Forestry Commission recommended that council approve the changes in chapter 8.32. We are going back to them on April 4th. One of the things that Urban Forestry Commission had requested at that meeting was that staff revisit those mitigation options to look at the environmental benefits of individual trees. We had done some of that work previously. We're going to go a step further, do some additional investigation on that particular component, bring the results of that investigation back to Urban Forestry Commission on April 4th. We have our workshop with Planning Commission tonight. We will be back in front of you, April 20th, for a recommendation to council, followed by council hearings for introduction and possible adoption in late spring. So with that, thank you so much for your patience as I walked you through all of that history and where we're at with the project. We'd like to open it up to questions and I'd like to point out that that Matt Basil, urban forester, is here this evening. Certainly, we have Mr. Shipman, Assistant City Attorney, to talk about the the legal pieces. And we also have Matt Brazina, our Parks Manager here this evening as well. So thank you again.
Thank you, Kelly. That's a lot of work. So I think we'll go to a public comment now, if that's okay with everybody, and then we can bring it back to the commission and ask questions and go into comments. So our first public comment is Daniela Louie. No, I probably messed that up. You have three minutes, and if you can state your name, please.
And if you could bring that microphone down, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Daniel Enoe, I'm with the Washoe County Health District, Air Quality Management Division. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed tree protection ordinance. In 2016, the Reno Council Reno City Council adopted Resolution 8189, supporting ozone advance. The ozone advance program encourages voluntary strategies to meet statutory federal air quality standards. A non-attainment designation means progressively more stringent requirements until ozone levels improve and meet air quality standards. The Clean Air Act does not allow variances if non-attainment areas do not meet these standards or deadlines. Tree the tree protection ordinance will directly and indirectly affect our ozone concentrations. Every temperature-related measurement indicates that our urban heat island is worsening. Average temperatures are increasing, cooling degree days are increasing, the number of 90 and 100 degree days are increasing, and extreme extreme heat episodes are getting longer. Urban heat island disproportionately impacts underserved communities and is an obstacle to active transportation. The thousands of trees planted over the last 50 years has not been enough to offset the increase in heat absorbing materials from the development of houses, buildings, and roads. The Air Quality Management Division has six comments on the proposed ordinance. Number one, we support the requirement for proper soil volume and quality for tree plantings. These standards will increase the likelihood of a healthy urban forest. Number two, we support a mitigation mechanism to allow an option for removed or unplanted trees to be deposited deposited into a community bank. Similar programs exist for other natural resources such as wetlands, which results in a net benefit. Without this type of program, the only option for the city of Reno Public Safety Building would have been a variance for 82 trees that would have never been planted. Number three, we support a process to evaluate land use development projects for tree canopy coverage. Canopy has a strong nexus to urban heat island. Number four, we support Reno's Master Plan Goal 7.7A of implementing the goals, objectives, and action items defined in the Urban Forestry Management Plan. Number five, although outside the scope of this workshop, we support a regional approach to urban heat island and urban forestry. And number six, all stakeholders need to be flexible to develop a meaningful ordinance that reduces our urban heat island and improves our quality of life. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed tree protection ordinance.
Thank you very much. And next we have Cynthia Albright.
Hi there. For the record, Cynthia Albright, Chair of the Urban Forestry Commission. Madam Chair, I'd like to ask if I could have like five minutes, if possible?
I think we're going to keep it to three minutes. Thank you.
I'll start by saying that the Urban Forestry Commission has been working on this as Council Mandur, and certainly Kelly has discussed for quite a long time. I got started about seven years ago as a volunteer, when I was on the Urban Forestry Commission, working with Claudia originally. We have worked really, really hard, and I think the important thing to note is that we're not, we we as a group, you know, appointed members on the Urban Forestry Commission, that consists of folks like Bruce Barr, who who works to recognize and treat all the trees up in Lake Tahoe, and Anna Higgins, who protects the trees for the state. Together, we have a really dynamic group of people that all we care about is trying to protect what we have. And we don't want to require anybody to do anything new, we just want to protect what we have. And in the past, property management companies continue to cut down trees in urban environments, commercial projects, historic projects, industrial projects, because they don't know any better. And so part of this is an education process. But I I think it's really important to note that the comments and the the incentives that staff have come up with were universally not supported by any member on the Urban Forestry Commission. We do not think that adding or reducing wall articulation is an appropriate consideration for preserving trees. We think that that is completely separate different separate a separate issue. We don't mind if you want to give them more density or even reducing the amount of parking. But when it comes to building form, we want to protect that. And most importantly, we want everybody to understand that there were so many people who were supportive of the new language in title 18, and there are really great comments in there and updates that we all support, but we don't support the three mitigation measures. And the group is coming together again on Monday to discuss new ways in order to incentivize the community to protect the trees that they've planted. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have public comment? Wish to make public comment? Do we have some public comment online, Michelle?
I'm looking, and no one has their hand raised, so I think we're good on public comment.
Okay, we'll close public comment and bring, go ahead.
Just for the record, I did not receive any correspondence on this item, and no voicemails were received.
Okay. We'll officially close public comment. And let's have commissioners ask some clarifying questions, maybe of Kelly first, and then we can go into individual commissioners' comments, if that works for the commission. Let's start here with Commissioner Johnson. Do you have questions?
I was trying to figure out which of my questions were for Kelly and which ones were otherwise. I guess some of these were were maybe stuff I wasn't completely understanding. In terms of maybe some specifics, I guess backing up in general, I don't have any questions in terms of the intent of what's happening here. I think my questions are maybe more specific and and some of them actually are what our last public commenter touched on. But before I get into that, I guess I had two questions that came up. There was one, one comment that requires a mix of trees on a site with no more than 20% of any one, I use the term species, but I'm sure it's a genus or something like that. I guess my my question is, it it seems like sometimes there's a desire to have a number of trees that are of the same species on a site. So I guess I'm I'm wondering if this was a recommendation. I know the the foresters here and some other people, but it just seemed odd to me that we're we're forcing a multitude of trees on a site, which I wasn't quite sure where that one was coming from. And it was in 1804, 805, 3B. It's one of the few ones I actually wrote down. So that's maybe just a question to to look into. And then I had a question in terms of some the tree islands in a parking lot. And maybe this is a question between what's being preserved versus what's new, but there was something specific in there that providing a tree island would replace a parking space. And it wasn't in the spot where the incentive was. So it was it was somewhere else that looked like it was an addition to code where providing a certain island. I just want some clarification. I'm okay with a tree being preserved and and have that be in lieu of in a tree island in lieu of a parking space, but I think the code's pretty clear in terms of the number of islands that need to be provided, and they don't allow you to reduce the number of parking just because you're putting in a tree island. So there was just a there was a clarification question on that.
Certainly, and and thank you for those those questions. So I'll address the parking lot one first, and then I'll ask if our urban forester, Matt Basil, can can speak to the other one a little bit. You are correct in terms of that is that is new language in the section for landscaping on parking lots, where the we've we've changed up the requirement some in terms of, you'll see the new requirements for soil volume about trees, recognizing that that is something that that we believe in many cases, appropriate soil volume may not have been provided in the past. And we want to encourage and ensure to the extent possible that trees that are going into parking lots have adequate soil volume. And that one of the kind of trade-offs there or things that we will help to make sure that that gets through is is the recognition that, okay, go ahead and, you know, you're building that island to the size of a parking space, and that that then can count. And this is something that Sparks does as well right now, where that counts towards the required parking spaces. So that is for new installation of new trees, that's not for preservation of existing trees, which is why, you know, you wouldn't have seen that in the incentive section. But yes, thank you for the opportunity to to clarify that, that that was that intent of of trying to, you know, ensure that that appropriate soil soil volume is provided, make it more likely that it's provided, and, you know, recognizing that there is some some bit of a trade-off there. Certainly, that's something that we would love to hear from the the commission if there are concerns on. And then for your other question, that is one I'm going to ask Mr. Basil to address. And I don't know if you've all met Matt Basil, the city's urban forester. He's been an integral part of of this process. Do you need the the code section? So we were talking about, Mr. Johnson's question was about this recommendation in here about the tree mix not making up more than 20% of the landscape. And I do want to just point out before Matt answers, that's a recommendation, not a requirement in the in the code standard.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for the question. The the theory behind requiring more tree diversity with any given development is to try and have a more resilient urban forest of the the trees that we have. In the past, it was common to plant kind of all of the same type of tree. And then what I find is that it makes the that development more susceptible to pests and diseases. So for example, a lot of our ash trees are dying right now from western ash bark beetle. So in developments that were planted completely with ash, we're losing the entire canopy from that development. So so the goal here is, you know, just to have more diversity. So as, you know, certain trees are lost for whatever reason, we don't lose the entire population of trees. You know, but we did by setting it at 20%, we recognize that, you know, in landscape architecture, they often want groupings of a like type of tree for aesthetics. So we're accounting for that.
Okay. Thank you. I think that was the better understanding of it now that you've explained it, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I have I have comments more than questions, so I'll turn it over to back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Do you have questions? How about folks on Zoom? Do we have questions before we get into comments? Commissioner Gower?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have just a couple of questions of staff. Kelly, and maybe for Matt too, if you could clarify how staff is looking at the number of trees as a requirement versus tree canopy? And it seems like those are two potentially different metrics. And if there's a way to talk about them a little bit more consistently in the ordinance?
Certainly, and Commissioner Gower, I'll go ahead and try to answer your question and see if there's anything else that Matt would like to to add to that. So so yes, you are correct in terms of we do, in our landscaping requirements, speak to them a little bit differently, where we'll have requirements for a certain number of trees to be planted, say, you know, street trees to be planted or in the the parkway to be on a, you know, certain number of feet on center. So let's say it's every 30 feet, though we want to make sure that we see a street tree. And we have a focus that I think was strengthened in our the adoption of the new zoning code in early 2021 of prioritizing shade trees and strengthening that even further with this draft, where putting in additional language about minimum percentage, for example, for street trees, minimum percentage needing to be a class three or class four canopy-sized tree. So recognizing that over time that those will provide additional canopy coverage and certainly, you know, in areas like along the street or in a parking lot, that we want to prioritize those those trees that provide additional shade because of those benefits when it comes to the urban heat island impacts. because of those benefits when it comes to the urban heat island impacts. Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does, and it's getting at it. And I guess I've noticed in other tree ordinances that they, they talk about tree canopy specific to just the amount that's shaded. So the, the, you know, essentially the equivalent in another jurisdiction of our Title 18 for a project that comes in, instead of being, having a requirement to hit a number of trees, the requirement is to provide, you know, 20% tree canopy cover for a project area. And it seems like that type of approach would be more consistent and it would more consistent with our master plan, I should say. And our urban forestry plan that identifies a tree canopy target. Because we're essentially using number of trees and trying to translate it through the type of trees to get to the canopy percentage. So I'm just trying to think of a, you know, a more consistent way to talk about what we're ultimately trying to get to, which is a canopy cover.
Thank you for that. And, and I'll just ask this question quickly, if there was a, a particular ordinance that you had looked at or worked out previously, where you've seen that and thought it worked well.
One in particular that I liked was in Sacramento, and I was going to bring up this related to the parking standards is they essentially, they have a 50% shading requirement for parking areas, and they leave the approach of how to get to that 50% up to the, the developer. And it provides a little bit of flexibility, I think, in terms of how to design a parking lot. As opposed to kind of where we have it, where it's very specific in terms of, you know, stalls, you know, between islands and that sort of thing. It just says that you've got a, a chart, number of spaces, you know, what's your shading, and it's all based on, you know, that 50% metric for shading. So I thought that was pretty effective.
Thank you.
Yep. Madam Chair, if I could, and Kelly, my other question is similar. We received some comments about the 2012 inventory of tree canopy cover. Can you just provide an update on if we have any more recent information related to tree canopy?
Yes, thank you for the, the question, and I am going to send that over to Mr. Basil.
Thank you for that question. The, we do agree that the, the current tree canopy analysis is somewhat dated. So I'm working currently with the state of Nevada and specifying a, a new, an update to that canopy study. One of the things we're waiting for is the current satellite imagery is from 2019. And there's supposed to be a new, an updated satellite imagery very soon that we can do our analysis with so that it's the most up to date. But we are, I'm actually meeting with the state community and urban forestry person on Wednesday to try and finalize the specifications for that, for that update. So we do have, that is in the works. We don't have it completed as of right now. But we are working to, to have that data here as quickly as we can. So I hope that answers your question.
It really does. Thank you, Matt. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
I do have one more question. I think this might go back to Kelly. Thanks, Kelly. My last question relates to requirements in the wildland urban interface and how the ordinance could potentially incorporate specific standards for those areas.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, go ahead.
It's a, it's a great question, and it's something that, especially with the, the prior draft that we were looking at pretty closely, and I think there's a couple of ways to potentially address your question. So I'll just speak to the, the prior draft first. That had significantly more mitigation requirements, and we were cognizant of the fact that, you know, we, we want to make sure that any tree protection that we put into place, tree protection standards or requirements, that that does not increase the likelihood for, you know, catastrophic fires. We wanted to make sure that there were exemptions in place for, you know, when there was, say, an approved defensible space plan, that trees that are recommended for removal as part of that defensible space plan, that the property owner would not, you know, get dinged essentially for removing those trees. So that was something that was in the, the December draft that came out. Those exemptions came out because the mitigation section came out. Certainly, it's something too that not necessarily specific to the WUII, but you'll see the first section in the code draft in Title 18 where we are talking about the, the stream environment areas, which are generally, you know, kind of, of course, not in the core. They're further out. We're more likely to, to see those. Those areas, especially where there's significant riparian vegetation, that we wanted to make sure that, that, that trees were specifically called out as part of that riparian vegetation protection. And those standards, again, not, not specific to the WUII and WUII requirements, but, but something that could be considered as part of any review where those areas are impacted.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you pointed to that section. And I think there is a, a need to look at alternative landscaping standards in those WUII areas. I don't think we're wanting to necessarily hit, you know, these tree canopy targets in WUII areas, just because of that, you know, adding the, the, the fuels there. But is there a way to essentially sort of like a development right transfer, you know, take that tree canopy that would otherwise be required in those areas and through some sort of mechanism, whether it be a fund or, or something, you know, move that canopy elsewhere in the city. So we're not, we're not losing out on it, but we're being responsible essentially in terms of where we're putting it. That's not really a question. I was kind of getting into a comment there.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think that's all I have. Kelly, thank you so much, and thanks, Matt. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. You sound absolutely fantastic. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Not in person.
Commissioner Villanueva, do you have questions for Kelly before we move on to comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Kelly, thank you for all the work. This is, this is a lot. So I really, I mean, you guys did a really good job. So my question is with regard to the incentives. Would the tree incentives for like parking spaces and wall design and, and that sort of stuff, would that create, you know, some fairness issues for maybe potential sites that don't have those opportunities? Maybe they don't have the trees on those site, on, on, on their sides and therefore wouldn't be permitted to have some of these incentives that are available to others? Would that potentially impact opportunities for waiver for those candidates or applicants? You know, do you guys foresee any issues with fairness with regard to some of those incentives?
Commissioner, that's a, that's a great question, and I think that it's like with many of our, our policies, there's always a trade off when it comes to incentives. You know, I'll, I'll point to the affordable housing section of our code where we offer incentives for parking infredensity to put in additional affordable, you know, to put in income restricted affordable housing. And this kind of, I think, the incentives here borrow off that approach where we're in some cases, you know, prioritizing preservation of trees with these incentives. Now, in terms of, of whether or not that is, is fair or not, I, I don't know that I could adequately speak to. It's certainly, you know, anytime that we put these kind of incentives in place, that's a, you know, policy decision in terms of is this thing that we're trying to incentivize, is it worth the trade off? Whatever that incentive is that we're offering, you know, is it more important to the city of Reno to preserve trees than to have a certain number of parking spots or to preserve trees in lieu of, you know, having a certain number of wall articulation elements? So I, I think that that's always a consideration and something that we encourage the decision-making bodies to think about when they make their recommendations. I think that's a, a great question, though.
Thank you. And this next question, well, I think it is more appropriate for the, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting his name, but the
Mr. Basil, Urban Forester?
Yes.
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 All right.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you. Hello. So for, we talked a little bit about some of the diversity of trees and the rationale for that. Is there, is there anything in here about prioritizing just native trees? And you're the expert, not me, but it seems that it'd be more important to prioritize native trees and arid, you know, trees that are suitable for arid environments over diversity of trees? Is that something that you all considered? And is that something that we see here in this new ordinance proposal?
Are you referring to the preservation of existing trees or the planting of new trees or both?
The planting of new trees for development. I think it goes a little bit towards the question that Commissioner Johnson asked, or yeah, Commissioner Johnson asked earlier about, you know, the diversity of trees. Was that prioritized over native trees because of the rationale you gave earlier? Or what was some of the thinking that went into that?
Sure. And I, I wouldn't say it's prioritized over native trees. We do have a very limited palette of, you know, native species to the area that are, that we can use in the landscape. So so that, that definitely factored into it. As part of our recommended tree species list, we do include trees that are more highly recommended because they are more drought tolerant and are lower water usage trees. And, and we do encourage them. I think that it's still important to, to make sure that we're using a diverse palette of, of trees in the landscape, which, you know, which does include those, those water, you know, low water usage drought tolerant trees, right? And, you know, as, as part of that, we're constantly bringing in new, different species that we're trying in the landscape that, that we think are, are appropriate here and better off than, you know, some of the ones that have been more common, commonly used here in the past. And, and that's, you know, you know, part of why we're encouraging the diversity to avoid situations where, you know, a lot of developments might plant all maple trees, which are not drought tolerant at all and not really appropriate for the area, but people still like maple trees. So we're saying it's okay to have some, but, you know, let's incorporate, you know, a wide diverse palette of trees that, that are appropriate here as much as possible.
Okay, that makes sense. And then is there, you, I, I noticed the term vegetation is used. Is there a term for what, what that means, vegetation? What does that reference? What, what are we talking about when we see the term vegetation?
Do you have a specific area where you are referring to?
So so section 18.04.103, and then if you jump down to subsection G, mitigation plan required. So it says negative impacts to wetlands, stream environments, plies, spring fed riparian, non-404 wetlands shall be mitigated, period. And then, and then this new language says this includes mitigation of impacts to trees and other vegetation associated with these resources. What, in that, in that provision, what does vegetation mean? Are we talking about like ornamental grass? Or are we, what is, I'm not sure what vegetation means.
You know, we, we talked a lot about the, you know, specific definitions of, of what we are looking at through the Urban Forestry Commission. And I think vegetation was a broad word to try and include all different vegetation that is important in a, you know, specifically in a riparian area, for example, which might include grasses, forbs, shrubs, you know, all different types of plant material. So it's, it's, I think the word vegetation is to be all encompassing for plant material.
So would that mean?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if this is actually appropriate for you or for Kelly. So would that mean that we, we, there'd be incentives to, to maintain ornamental grass? Or is that not, I imagine that's not the intent, but I'm just, was that part of the conversation?
I'll let Kelly touch on that one.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. So the incentives are specific to trees. Existing trees. So the, that is specific to existing trees that were not required to be planted. So that section in terms of, you know, if you might get a density bonus or parking credit or anything, any of those other ones, that would not be applicable to preservation of, of shrubs or grasses, that kind of thing. However, that section that you were referencing in terms of the, the wetland stream environment protection, we do have a whole administrative manual that deals with the processes and requirements when someone may potentially impact one of those riparian areas with development.
Okay, okay. So, so obviously the intent here is not for maintaining or preserving vegetation. This is for trees and, and vegetation here is used as more of a broad, all encompassing term for trees. Is that accurate?
So that, that particular section, I'm just going to pull it up, that you were referring to was under 1804, 103, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that is, you know, most of that, what you see there is, and it was subsection G1, is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so this is just, that, that added sentence that's in red is just clarifying that, you know, the mitigation that's, that's required when you're talking about potentially negative impacting wetland area, stream area applies, spring fed riparian, et cetera, that that needs to be mitigated, that we want to make sure that that mitigation covers impacts to trees and other vegetation. So this is kind of a, a section that is separate from that subsequent section, 1804, 105, that focuses on tree protection.
Yeah, I mean, it totally makes sense. You want to preserve those things. I just, the reason why I even bring it up is just, I mean, to say we do like a turf removal, there's not going to be any, you know, consequences for someone, you know, removing the turf and replacing it with mulch or something like that, so long as, you know, the trees are preserved and some of these other things are maintained. There's not going to be any ramifications for, for something like that. So I just, you know, that's, that's how I read this. I just wanted to confirm with you.
And I, and I want to clarify too that, and thank you for that, that question. I do want to clarify that, you know, in the landscaping section, which is in Article 8, that starts on page 11 of Attachment A. That's where we start to get into the requirements for new landscaping. And certainly if, you know, shrubs or turf or whatnot, if that was included as part of the required landscaping plan for the development, and someone was proposing to remove those items that were required as part of the development, then they would need to come in for that landscape permit to make sure that they're still meeting the standards of the, the code. But let's say if it's existing shrubs or grass that's naturally occurring, that was not associated with development, then, and assuming it's not in a riparian area, then generally speaking, I would say, yes, that's probably something that, you know, could potentially be done. Speaking generally.
Thanks.
Okay, Kelly, I just have one quick question. It sounds like you guys, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but you're going to be meeting again on April 4th. Do you anticipate any major changes or big changes that we should think about when we're giving you our comments from what we're seeing today and what we might see after that meeting? Is there something that's not applicable? Or maybe we need to consider something else? I just don't want to give you information that isn't relevant.
Yeah, great, great question. Thank you for that. So what we are planning on doing is asking Urban Forestry Commission for their recommendation on the language in Attachment A. That recommendation will be provided to city council. We are also going to be asking Planning Commission on April 20th to provide your recommendation as a body on Attachment A. That recommendation will also be provided to city council. So we would not anticipate that there would be, you know, any, like you asked, many major changes because we're, we're both, we're going to be looking for recommendations on Attachment A from both bodies.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, let's, go ahead.
Can I follow, can I follow up on that question? So if I'm understanding
So if I'm understanding it correctly, so the Attachment A that we're looking at today, that's going to be the same Attachment A that comes back to us on the twentieth? Not, it's not, because if you're going back to Urban Forestry, it sounds like from what we're hearing from public comment, there are some concerns with it in there. It seems like the next time it comes to us, we should be looking at something that has their comments included in it prior to us sending it on to council. Is that the approach that you're going to be taking?
So what we will do for the, the staff report that is provided to you for your April twentieth decision is to identify whatever action was taken at Planning Commission. And I do want to be clear, you know, in terms of what Urban Forestry Commission asked us for at the March sixteenth meeting was to go back and do some additional research on, you know, looking at the environmental benefits of specific trees and methods for potentially calculating that and seeing if there may be mitigation options that could be associated with that. So we are still doing some of that research. We expect to provide them with additional information on March fourth. There is certainly a possibility that any recommendation that they make may be to include some of what comes out of that research. But again, we will absolutely provide you with an update on whatever action, whatever recommendations that they make. You know, and I think one of the key pieces here too, is that generally speaking, Urban Forestry Commission has more purview over Chapter eight point three two. Planning Commission generally has more purview over Title eighteen, over the zoning code. They are, of course, intricately linked as part of this project. We want to make sure that the recommendations from both bodies are provided to council for when they make their, they make their decision on the ordinance.
Okay, I guess, and I appreciate where you're going with that. However, it just seems like, you know, we're, we're several meetings away from going to council. And so it seems like you're, under the approach that you're talking about, you've got one document here that's going to have three or more sets of comments overlaid on the top as opposed to getting the comments and the feedback that we're providing and determining whether or not it should be incorporated. And the same with Urban Forestry. I mean, if they're, if they're universally not supporting something in the document, it seems like there should be, you know, some discussion about that in terms of what's actually being presented if the, there. So I guess as a, you know, you answered my question, so I'm going into comment, but I did have one more question, and I'm sure just to understand. A lot of information here, we heard also in public comment that there's probably a request for additional staffing in order to do this. I guess my question is, what is the, what exactly is the position that you're looking for or positions in order to implement this? Is it at the review level? Is it at the inspection level? Is it at multiple levels? Just trying to understand how that is impacted in the, the overall process of what we're doing here.
Yeah, and thank you for the opportunity to clarify that. So what we have been talking about for the, the resource request is, I don't want to put a specific title to it, but what we were talking about was, was potentially a landscape architect or someone who may have similar training, who would be able to provide that educated review of landscaping plans and proposals and do those inspections on site. And so, you know, that's what we've been kind of talking about internally. The full scope of what that position would be responsible for is not something that's been, you know, explicitly laid out and determined. I think part of it will be based on, you know, certainly a direction from council on that. But that is what we are expecting is, that's what we believe is needed. Someone to be able to, at a minimum, to go out and do those landscaping inspections and then also provide advice and guidance on essentially everything landscape related where that area of expertise comes in handy.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioners, I think we're going to get into comments and I'd like to start with Commissioner Gower. So if he needs to get out early and go to bed, get some rest, feel better.
Madam Chair, appreciate that. I guess I will make a few comments. First of all, I just want to thank staff and the Urban Forestry Commission. I think it's a great process that this ordinance has gone through, public facing and really like seeing the, the input that's been provided and incorporated. So I just wanted to share that. I did want to voice my support for the comments that Daniel Inouye made from the Air Quality Management Division at Washoe County. I think that's important information related to the current status of our ozone attainment, particularly as it relates to urban heat island and the opportunity that street, that urban tree canopy can play in mitigating the ozone concerns. And I do echo also the comments that he made about the adequate soil volume, the potential need for, you know, some sort of mitigation. As we saw with that public facility at the city of Reno, would have been nice to have an alternative to the variance process. We don't just lose out on the street trees in a scenario like that. I want to also echo Cynthia Albright's comments and concerns about the incentives. I also feel that there is sort of a missing nexus between retaining trees and getting some sort of incentive for, you know, something related to urban form like wall articulation. I just don't see how those really go together and I wouldn't really support that as a type of incentive. I do think there's a need to specifically call out wildland urban interface in the ordinance. I think this is something that should be at the, really the top of our list, right there with things like housing affordability in our city to deal with very progressively. And putting specific standards in for wooey areas for landscaping. So it's, you know, front and center when a developer comes in, they know what the expectations are for landscaping in these areas. And like I mentioned to Kelly, having the corollary to that, making sure that we're not losing out on those, that urban tree canopy potential by developing in those worry areas. So having a mechanism to where we can get the tree canopy elsewhere in the city. I do want to see, or I would really like to see, the consistent metric of canopy versus number of trees. I think that would really take it from the master plan through the urban forestry plan into our ordinance, bring some consistency. So we're all talking about the same metric, which is canopy or the amount of shade that the trees provide. You know, I think it's pretty straightforward, the amount of shading potential that a individual species can provide. So using that metric consistently, I think should be something that we do. I support staff's recommendation for having an inspector for the landscaping. I think that's a really important step to make sure that this requirement, just like any other requirement that we would have or put on a development as the city is implemented. And we need to have the staff resources to be able to make sure that that is realized. I do like for parking areas, the percentage of shading, whether it's fifty percent or something else. And that's what they used in Sacramento was fifty percent. And providing the flexibility of how that's implemented on a site by site basis. In addition to the inspector, I think having some sort of mechanism to ensure that trees reach a maturity. You know, I've talked a lot with Brooke Oswald about bonding requirements or some sort of security. They do that in the Tahoe Basin to realize, to ensure that trees reach a maturity. I know it's been kind of a touchy subject, but something that I would like us to explore. Madam Chair, I think that's about all I can say.
Thank you, Commissioner Gower. Commissioner Villanueva, did you want to provide comments? No comments? Okay. Commissioner Dragic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what Commissioner Gower just said, notably with the inspector. It was one of those things that seemed like a must have, not only for the preservation of the trees and also if we approve something here and we expect certain landscaping, it should be delivered and also sustained over time. And I would imagine inspector and city resources is crucial to that. So that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I do want to echo the comments on staff and the work on that, including legal. You guys don't get a shout out very often. So Jonathan, I see you over there. I do, and I appreciated the, the answers to some of the questions on the specifics. Obviously, this, some of this is definitely outside of, you know, realm of, of expertise. But I, the, the one thing that I do want to definitely question is the incentives for some of the articulation, the wall articulation. I don't think, as has been said, I definitely don't see the, the nexus between those two. Certainly the tree looks great now, but the tree is a, you know, the lifespan of the building behind it is probably longer than the lifespan of the tree if it's being done right. And so I think what, you know, incentivizing, you know, the preservation of trees is great. I think there's definitely some benefit for the reduction of additional trees as a part of that. I think that incentive makes sense. One question I do have in terms of the incentives is, I know we had to land on a number, but what is it about three smaller trees that kicks in the incentive? Why isn't it five? Is there, you know, is there a different incentive in terms of whether it's a tree that's on the front of the property versus a tree that's on the back of the property? I think if we're, you know, if we're doing, you know, certainly all of the trees are important, but I would question maybe specifically how some of these incentives are put together and see if there's a way to, to link that a little bit better. But I absolutely do not support an incentive for modifying the architecture of the building. The density is a, you know, certainly something that you brought up in your presentation. There is a nexus there that if we can find ways to incentivize additional units, I think that's good. I did appreciate Commissioner Villanueva's question about one side or the other in terms of what we're putting in there and wanted to, you know, thank you for your answer to that, because I think that was a, a good way of pointing out that there are other places in code where, you know, because of what you're doing, you get a certain benefit that you, you know, not, is not necessarily open to everybody. So a barren open site doesn't get the benefits of the tree preservation that, you know, an existing infill would. So I appreciate that. I do, I do want to just follow up on my, you know, desire to hear and see the recommendations from the Urban Forestry Group when this comes back. I think their input is incredibly valuable. And as you pointed out, there's aspects of this that we just don't understand to the degree that they do. So certainly want to make sure that that's front and center for us in terms of what comes back. So, and then I think the, the only other thing that I would say, we, we did receive some, some comments to us early in the process about, you know, support and not supporting. I think there was definitely some public comment that was included in our Appendix B that was probably based on some of the original documents. I do think, as I read through it, because I read through this document after I'd seen all of those letters. And so I was looking to try to find the areas where, you know, there was a, a taking or where there was somebody entering private property without, you know, permission. And I didn't see any of that. So whether it was there before or what, it was very clear to me in terms of the document that I was looking at that, you know, this was not going on to people's properties, this was not modifying what was going on there. So I just want to put that out there that, you know, I definitely read through it with that in mind and did not see any of that. So again, going back to thanking staff for working through that, what may have been there, I think has been cleared up. So with that, I'll just again say that, you know, the, appreciate the carrot versus the stick approach. But I do think that we need to really, you know, think a little bit more about the carrot that we're providing and how that one is defined and then make sure that it's tied to something that's actually, you know, benefiting from that. So, thank you.
Okay, I guess my comments are a lot in line with what other Commissioners had said. So I'm trying to not repeat myself.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Gower took care of like ninety percent of our comments, so before he lost along.
One thing that I wanted to stress is on your presentation, when I looked at what the issues were, ninety percent of what I saw was an enforcement issue of things that aren't being done or need to be done. So I would encourage enough resources, whatever that is, and that's not my expertise, to make sure that we can enforce what we have and what we want to have. Because it seems like if we were enforcing what we have already, we would have less of a problem right now. I don't think more rules and regulations are going to improve the situation if we don't have the resources that you guys need or we need as a community. I think whatever decisions are being based off of the two thousand twelve canopy survey, it sounds like we're getting updated information, but we should be making decisions off, off of, you know, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one, considering moving forward, not twenty twelve. I would also like to mention impacts on affordable housing, what those would be. I know we talked about incentives and additional units, but whatever decisions or policy is made, I'd like to make sure that we're looking at impacts on affordable housing. I know there was consideration for a monitor, a monitor during the construction. Not sure who pays for that. There's always a balancing act. Construction costs are super high and getting higher right now, so everybody is aware of that. I would, I guess personally, my opinion is I would err on the side of private property when it comes to government interference based on what we heard from legal and take their advice. Again, not my expertise, but I think, you know, private property and what government requirements are as far as there's benefits. And I think Jonathan talked about compensation and what that looks like. What, what I wouldn't want to see happen is developers chop down all their trees and then they come in and get a permit. Because there's a, you know, and it sounds like that we're all working together and working through some of those issues in the outside workshops. And I don't know if this was brought up, but when we did the code update, we had an implementation timeframe. So I don't know where people are within the entitlement process when this would go to in effect. But I don't know if there's a grace period, but we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see negative impacts on developments that are already in the process or where they would have to go back and reapply or get different permits. I really like the idea of the wildland interface by what Commissioner Gower said, and then the actual canopy versus trees, because that made a lot of sense and it sounded like that was the goal. And lastly, just appreciate everybody's time and effort. I know everybody is super busy and it looks like you've been working on this for very, very many years. You're pulled in very many directions and it looks like there's just one of you sitting here. So I think you might need a couple more of you to make this happen, which is not this body's. I can go ahead and say it all I want. Commissioners, other questions, comments, concerns? On Zoom? Okay. Kelly, do you have anything?
I just want to thank you so much for your time this evening and, and walking through this with us. We wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to ask questions and review things ahead of asking for a formal action. So again, appreciate it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any public comment?
Are we moving on to item five?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I did not receive any request to speak forms, voicemails or correspondence for this item.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to item number six.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All does appear. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.